Please bring me the flag. So would you read the mission statement?
I have to get it on.
The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stephanie?
Here.
Annette?
Here.
Barbara?
Yeah.
John? Tracy Allen? Claudia?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Jonah?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
In the Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In according with the provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be, shall be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record, the Star-Ledger newspapers, the borough clerks, borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district, principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student center environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in active partnerships, to provide all students with the opportunity to exceed, I'm sorry, to achieve and exceed the New Jersey student learning standards.
At this point, I'd like to open up to public comments on agenda items only. There'll be, at the end of the meeting, there'll be time to speak on anything you want. Okay, hearing none. We have a presentation tonight by the robotics team, so the floor is yours.
We've been waiting two weeks for this, just so you know. No pressure.
Yes, so as you probably guessed from the robotics team, and we just really wanted to come here to give a demonstration of our robot and just say a big thank you to all of you because you really helped us in getting here and our success at Worlds. Not sure if you know, but it was an international competition, so there are teams from like over 32 countries there in Texas, and we actually were one of the 16 alliance captains in the world after a bunch of qualifications and stuff, and we got to the finals of our division. So we did very well, and yeah, it might seem like, you know, oh, I know that whenever I say I'm in robotics, everyone's like, oh, is it like battle bots? But we pick up pixels and we put it on the backboard, and then in our round, we do a bunch of other things, such as hanging the robot and shooting an airplane to a specific spot. So for now, we can demonstrate the pixel, and yeah, so we'll drive the robot. So the drive team consists of two people. One person who controls the elevator and the claw, which is me, and then Subham, which is him, moves it around the field. So it's kind of hard because we don't have a mat right now, but what we do is we pick it up and we place it on that. Well, we usually do. Angle's a bit off right now, but if we can maybe place it on, that would be pretty nice. Yay, okay. So that's what we do. It's a two-person drive team, and everybody assists with everything, so yeah.
And there's a whole bunch of ways to score extra points. They can arrange these colored pixels in certain patterns. At the end of the game, guys, why don't you show them the lift? At the end of the game, if the, if the robot can lift itself up?
Yeah, usually on the field, there's a setup.
Put it lower a bit.
And then? So you get points for all these different acts? Thank you. So as simple some of it looks, as you can imagine when you're trying to do it remotely through a joystick, and trying to design this from scratch, there's no, there's no instruction book that taught them how to do this. They did an outstanding job.
You had a lot of options in designing this robot to do what you needed it to do. How do you select the options? How do you choose?
David's sort of our head engineer here, so I'm gonna let him talk to it.
Yeah, so you mean like, how did I like select the design of the robot? So it went through like a lot of iterations. We started with like a basic like drive base first, and through that drive base, we like learned a lot of like, a lot of problems. At first, building like a robot seems like really simple, like, oh, we just have a claw that picks up the pixels.
You say that, but I don't think that's simple at all, but go ahead.
But then, you know, like, then, you know, the pixels, like, they fall out, they don't fall out in the right way, they, like, the robot breaks down because something wasn't like screwed on, the things wasn't like, it was hard to maintain because certain things are hard to get to or they're in the way, and so, or some things like slightly asymmetric about the robot, and during the autonomous period where it has to move on its own, it's like getting messed up. And so all of those things are things that we learned throughout the season, how to compensate with and deal with. For example, one of the, one of the major improvements that we made was on the elevator, there's like a kit that is sold by the robotics company that makes it, but those, those pulleys kept breaking off, and so Subham like designed like a 3D, 3D printed piece that can hold the pulleys on. And so finally, we, throughout the mid-season, we also catted out the entire robot, and so finally, that was what allowed us to build the robots that, the robot that went to states and got us to Worlds. So yeah, that's like going through the whole season, like small, small improvements, building on small improvements, eventually make a really good robot.
And I imagine there were some ideas that you or your team had that you were not able to get into the actual design and operation of this robot. There were things that you tried to bring through to get to the finish, but you weren't able to do that.
Yeah.
You had to pull back and go into a different direction. How late in the process was that happening?
That actually happened.
It'll be right up to the very end.
It actually happened, there were like some ideas that we thought of trying in the beginning of the year. It was like a, like a single claw trying to drop both of them at once. That system didn't really work out that well. We also thought like, like, one idea that I had that we didn't end up pursuing because it wasn't practical, it's like trying to put a turret or something, was like the hang mechanism. There's like a different hang mechanism where it like, it's hard to explain, but it comes up and it doesn't need like a motor to hang. It just like, the robot just rams into the bar and hangs, but that, that would have taken too much time to get working, so like many things that like we had to simplify, and, but like in the end, like our simplicity is what allowed us to go so far.
And you're also keeping in mind like what you're going to be tasked to do in these competitions and make sure that you can do that. So you have a lot of work that goes into obviously the design and the building phase. There's also the phase of maintaining what you're building, because it doesn't always work all the time.
Yeah.
And there's also the piece of deciding who can best operate this robot. So how do you determine, the great job that they're doing tonight, by the way, but how do you determine who gets the responsibility to do that?
Yeah, do you want to talk about?
What can you all do it?
Well, I mean, they're like definitely our best drivers.
Yeah.
What makes you the best? Go ahead and tell me.
I mean, like us three, we've been working on the robot, like David's engineer, so essentially whoever kind of worked on the robot the most, they had the most experience testing it, and ultimately, we just decided that whoever had most experience hands-on with the robot was the one who actually drove in competitions.
Dr. Houston, could everyone introduce themselves and let us know what year they are at Riverdale?
They're gonna be getting certificates, so we're gonna do it that way, too.
But not, I, I.
Okay, you're good. Why don't you start?
Yeah, I'm David Soon. I'm in my junior year.
I'm Subham Kumar. I'm in my junior year, too.
I'm Parker Sarek Hussein. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Sushil. I'm a sophomore, too.
Boy, you got all in the classroom there. You're in good shape for next year.
And then we've also got Ted Eridos. I don't remember all their grades still, man. We have, we have Ash here, Scion, Camilla, Zach, Jeremy, Will, Brandon, where's Brandon? There he is. Did I miss anyone? And Jaden is our alumni mentor.
Yeah, the only senior on our team currently is Jeremy. Want to give a wave? Yeah, and he's, he's like graduating, he's been here, what, all four years of high school? So three, yeah.
Maddie.
Oh, Maddie, yeah. Maddie is sick today. She couldn't, Maddie can measure.
But everybody really has their like unique role, and yeah, everybody like gets to do stuff, and it's a lot of fun.
Well, you all have unique roles, but you put quite a team together. We're very impressed. The board was very supportive and wanted you to go on to Worlds. It's quite an accomplishment and certainly reflective of your hard work and Dr. Houston, especially for your mentorship for our students as well, so thank you.
Thank you so much for all your support. Just the enthusiasm around Riverdale has made it like so much easier and like better to get here and has really like publicized it. We have more members than we ever have, so.
And between the success and the growing members, we will be fielding a second robotics team next year, so two teams are ready.
Well, thank you for bringing the experience here. The board often, I say this about all the boards I've worked with, they, they work in anonymity. They, they don't necessarily see the work and the result of the decisions that they're making, so I thought it was important for you folks to come out tonight to show them some of the reasons why you were successful, so that they can hear from you, the impact that the board's decisions have made on the opportunities that you've had, so, so thank you for doing that. We do have some certificates just to recognize you from the Board of Education, just something for us to, that will keep safe for you, and just a way for us to say thank you. So you want to help me with that, Alan?
Sure.
Okay. Parker Hussein?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ted Eridos? Say your name. Great job. Subham Kumar? Great job. Camilla Malgar? Great job. Sushil, am I even gonna try? Great job. Zachary Nevin? Jeremy? Jeremy Salto? David Suin? Marcus Valcarrel? Marcus Valcarcel? Great job. Brandon Yi? Asher Zansky? Maddie was not here. That's all we had. If I missed anybody, we'll get you another certificate during the week. I think that's pretty much it. Again, thank you. I appreciate you coming out, and thank you for what you presented to the board this evening. Good question. Does the robot have a name? Sorry, we asked it, then.
Were there two names? I, I was a little bit for dark horse because we kind of came out of nowhere.
Okay, I'll take that.
Okay. Student member report.
On May 1st, the high school has, this year's our society inductions. Congrats to our hard-working students on this incredible achievement. With spring sports winding down, the teams are holding their senior night ceremonies. Congrats to the seniors and their parents. Thank you to the Future Teachers Club for providing snacks and treats for the teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Also, thank you to the Riverdale PT SO for ordering lunch for the staff members. Riverdale Athletic, the Riverdale Athletic Association congratulates student athletes committed to, committed to continue their sports in college next year. Matt Dunphy, Ty Bastillo, and Shaw Lauderhand for baseball. Gabriel Rodriguez for soccer. Isabella Gubay for track. Sean Golden for basketball. Connor Yandle for lacrosse. And finally, Owen Windrum and Liam Boyle for wrestling. Riverdale would also like to congratulate senior Christina Allen for representing Riverdale as an ambassador for the NJ SIAA. And AP testing has been happening last week and finishes up this week. Good luck to the students sitting in for the assessments and some upcoming events. The NJ SLA testing starts this week for freshmen and juniors. Good luck.
I want to remind everybody that on June 24th, it'll be the Friends of Riverdale Golf Outing. We do a lot of good things, scholarships, repaired the piano this year, so it's a worthwhile cause. Even if you don't play golf, you can come for the dinner at night, but anyway. And the second thing is, I want to remind everybody that the self-evaluation and the CSA evaluations have to be done, and I'd like to get it in by the end of the month, and some of you have not done it yet, so.
There seems to be a delinquent little corner over there.
So, anyway, please try and get it done. And superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on that stigma-free event at the high school. I was able to pop in for the very beginning of it. This was, I believe it was Friday last week, our stigma-free club put on a really robust event for all of our students. They ran it through the phys ed classes, and they, I didn't, wasn't able to get around to all the tables, but they had all kinds of activities set up for all the phys ed students, so they, they essentially hit every student in the building over the course of a day. I know the amount of work that went into it was tremendous, and the feedback that I was getting from students, I'd be quite honest with you, I didn't think they really were willing to participate, but every student participated in this, in the classes that I saw, so I was really pleased to see that. So, I congratulate the, the team that put that together and the administration for creating the schedule, so that all of our students could benefit from that. It was very much worthwhile. Just a point of information that every year, New Jersey school districts have to post their HIB grades, ours has been, we, it's kind of on a time lapse, we, we approved this back in August, September, for submission to the state. They only send it to us now to post on our website, so I'm just giving you information that I have posted on our website, but it's no change to what we've submitted to the state back in, I think it was August, one of the first things I did in coming in, so just that point of information. That's my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, committee reports. Budget and finance, we haven't had a meeting. Facilities, we had a meeting tonight, Doug.
We met tonight, Trudy took us through the upcoming work for the summer, which is going to involve replacement of the basketball court in the middle school, which will necessitate the building being shut down except for the board offices while that occurs, and some moves, also the security film on the buildings, putting up the wall in the library here to create a new room, and then, what was the other one? Paving, the middle school basketball court after the wood basketball court on the interior is, is removed. And then we also had some discussions, just an update on building security in general and our, what our plan is and going forward and implementing a badge ID system as people come in to scan their licenses and so forth. That's all.
Are the exchanges being done, or no? Not this summer? Well, I call them the ground units, but are the, are the, you know?
The, the, the HVAC in the middle school? No, that's part of the referendum. Like, that's down the road. Yeah, so the first, the first part of the referendum, Monique, correct me if I'm wrong, is, would be, would be the, the gymnasium, and then the security film on the windows.
Right, yeah, right.
Correct.
I have a question. Where's this classroom going in here?
Along where the columns are.
Where the balloons are.
Balloons are.
And what's going to?
You're making it flexible, yeah?
It's a small, small.
Flexible, yes.
Okay.
Small, okay. All right. Thank you.
Community relations, we're going to have the meeting on May 20th. Policy and governance.
We have a meeting coming up in June.
Okay. And curriculum.
Nothing to report, we have a meeting also scheduled for June.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to move that all items designated with an asterisk be part of the consent agenda and approved. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none.
Stephanie?
Yes, I wish him well in his future.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move everything from the executive session forward, except E2.
Make a motion?
Thank you, I have a second. I'll second. Thank you. Any questions?
Could you just summarize what we're moving forward for?
I'm sorry?
Can you just summarize what we're moving forward?
Yeah.
You don't have to read them, just what they are.
We're moving on. Recommendation to appoint Trudy, or our business administrator, for a period of July 1st to June 30th, 2025. Recommended at the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Angela Hesme. Hesme, as a teacher of science. It is also recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Lisa Cochrane to the position of confidential secretary to the superintendent, and.
Want me to get them? I got them.
You got the, well, thanks. It was recommended by the superintendent, board approved the appointment of Jacqueline Seis as the teacher of art.
And also in B1, the recommendation of the superintendent to accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of teacher of art Mercedes Fonda, effective June 30th, 2024. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We did that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did, we did that.
All right. You can call the vote.
Yes, and Ms. Fonda will, will be missed, and I wish her well in her retirement as well.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And good luck. And we're going to miss him. Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes, and Ms. Fonda is a big loss to this sitting district, so, but I wish her well.
Alan?
Yes, and I wish her well also. Okay, old business, new business.
So, Claudia and I and Dr. Abra went to the county end of the year meeting slash hoo-ha, however you want to put it, and our, and our dear Ms. Barbara Kouchar received her ten years of service award in absentia. So, I just wanted to share.
And Barbara shared with me that it's ten years, but it feels like ten minutes underwater, so congratulations.
Anything for board discussion? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. The one in favor?
Aye.
[Inaudible].